Okay, moving right along. I would like to call to order. The regularly scheduled council meeting. For the fifth of, for the tenth of May, twenty twenty one, at seven P M. To order. Barb, will you take a roll call?
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Here.
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Okay, that's six two zero with the zero is basically vacant. I will be repeating it, I'll just announce the votes as six zero. First up is the reading and disposal of the minutes. I would like to make a motion. To accept the regular meeting of council. Minutes on Monday, April twenty sixth at twenty twenty one, as written. Do I get a second, please?
I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Taglerini. Barb, would you take a roll, starting with me?
Nanadovich.
Vanavich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Are any written communications to council?
No, there are none.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay. Are there, is there any legislation coming out of committee?
No, Mr. Chairman, there is not.
Thank you, Councilman Vaughn. Okay, we will move on to the reports of the mayor and the directors. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to say that we're working hard to try to get the council chambers back in line for you. And also for, for the rest of council to be able to do the meetings in person. But I have to tell you, there's a lot of serious technology upgrades. And I, and going by what you had said, we're gonna work with Bruce Hobson and Tom Vaughn, as you instructed, to try to get that coordinated, those efforts coordinated, and get the equipment that we need to be able to make live streaming possible, things like that. Available. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. We're still waiting for whatever the contractors did do that stuff to come in and do. Still also waiting to find out if there's any, any news to open up our buildings. We, I'm on a mayor's and manager's call once a week. And there has been nobody that has fully opened their buildings. Some of them have tried to do it by appointment only. But, you know, we've got people that are not taking the COVID vaccine all of a sudden, and I think that's a concern. And then also, some of the cases of COVID have, has started to rise, some of them are stabilizing. You just don't really know what news report to believe half the time. But at any rate, I know that the Ohio State Department of Health and also the Western Reserve Center for the Aging has not cleared us to open. And so until that's done, we're not going to be able to. And also, when we do open, there's gonna be a slew of mandates that we're gonna have to follow. So we have to start preparing ourselves for that when it happens. I would like to introduce Inoplast. If you've caught the Cranes Business Week, you'll see that there is a new company that just signed their lease and they're coming to Highland Park. Inoplast is a company that has acquired two other companies, Thermal Crane and Seal Co., or Scale Co., I'm sorry, Scale Co., I can't read my own writing here. Just in a nutshell, this is about a four million dollar payroll that's coming to the city of Garfield Heights. They have taken up the Dick's Sporting Goods and the A.J. Wright Building, which is the building close to Giant Eagle. So now what they've done, ICP, what, what they have done is they've secured the Walmart location and they've secured a tenant in the other end, so they're kind of like the bookends. Let me give you a little bit of history on Inoplast. They make the bollard covers. If you have ever gone through a drive-through, McDonald's, Taco Bell, you'll see these metal poles that stick up out of the ground to keep you from hitting the building. On those poles, those are called bollards, those have a plastic sleeve that fits over them. That's what this company makes. They also make, when you go through the, sometimes some of the drive-throughs have them, but a lot of the car washes have them, the little plastic thing that hangs from the the top that tells you what your clearance is, they make that. They make the plastic speed bumps, see in the roads and parking stops. Now, this is what I found shocking when I, when I spoke with them the other day. They sold a hundred thousand of these bollard covers. And if you look around, there's probably gotta be literally hundreds of thousands of these things. So they're just one company that makes those. They're calling Garfield Heights their home. And they have plans to expand. So I think what you're gonna see as time goes on, you know, they want to actually sell two hundred thousand of these next year, these bollard covers, which to me is like doubling their business, but I think as time goes on, you're gonna, you could possibly see them build into a bigger facility and hire more people, and that'd be good for the city of Garfield Heights. So there's some major opportunity for growth in that area. They did sign a ten-year lease, and if you get a chance to read the Cranes article, it's, it's a very positive article in regards to the city of Garfield Heights. I also want to let you know that there are some rumblings about the Bridgeview site. And I have been contacted by that developer, he would like to meet with council at some point in time. I told him that we should wait till the, the appointment of the award for council person, and then we can have him come in and possibly talk about Bridgeview. So once that happens, I'll be contacting you to try to put together some sort of a meeting in regards to that. This week is National Police Week. And I would be remiss if I did not mention our fallen officers. Officer Hubert J. Smikowski. His end of watch was Tuesday, October fifth, nineteen seventy six. Officer Smikowski died after suffering a fatal heart attack following a foot pursuit and a struggle with a suspect. Officer Smikowski was survived by his wife and three children. Officer Michael Brown and Officer Robert Stefanoff, their end of watch was Thursday, December eighth, nineteen ninety four. Both were killed when their patrol car struck a utility pole during a pursuit. Officer Brown had served with the agency for four years. He was survived by his daughter. Officer Stefanoff was survived by his son and daughter. Sergeant Dennis Glevor, end of watch Sunday, August fourteenth, nineteen ninety four. Sergeant Glevor was shot and killed by a man who had barricaded himself inside an apartment when attempting to shield and escort medical personnel into the building. Sergeant Glevor has served with the Garfield Heights Police Department for seventeen years. On October nineteenth, nineteen ninety four, Sergeant Dennis Glevor was posthumously awarded the Purple Heart and the Medal of Honor. He is survived by his wife. Please join me now for a moment in silence for our fallen officers. Thank you. And I would just strongly urge any residents, if you see, if you see an officer this week, thank them, thank them for what they do, I'm sure they would like to hear it. And I think we have a, a great, a great force, you know, the, these guys work hard for, for us and they, you know, they do, when, when somebody needs to answer the call, they answer the call. With that, let me get into tonight's legislation. Ordinance number forty-three, two thousand twenty-one is to hire a Caterpillar hydraulic excavator. The point I want to make on this is there's some time sensitivity here, that's why it's an emergency ordinance. It, it is something that, these are not available all the time. So being that this one is available, I strongly urge support from council so that we can get this ordered and get it into our inventory of, of our service vehicle. Ordinance number forty-four, two thousand twenty-one is our website. It's to enter into an agreement with Civic Plus, who does B web sites for Berea, Shaker Heights, Mayfield Heights, Westlake, Fairview Park, Twinsburg, and I believe Soland. And if you have a chance to look at Shaker Heights' website, you'll see that it's much, much better and faster than what we have to offer. These guys are good at what they do, they specialize in only governmental websites. And I'm probably asking council for support on this. The, the main focus here is this funding comes from our COVID fund, so it's not coming out of our regular budget and it will not raise taxes to the resident. And with that, you have my report.
Thank you, Mayor Burke. Are there any questions for the mayor from council at this time? Fine, there being none, are there any directors that are on call right now wishing to make a report? Fine, there being none. And we'll move on with tonight's meeting.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Council President?
Mark, go ahead. You have the floor, Mark.
Yep. I apologize, I am multitasking here, I'm driving, so I had to take a child, one of my kids to basketball practice, so I forgive me, but I'm driving, but I'm gonna just go ahead and get my report here. We are currently patching. We have four crews out today, out in four different wards. We had some of our part-timers show they're out of college, we're waiting on a few that are still getting out of high school. But we are making progress, give us time, we are going street to street, please. Also, this week we started a household roundup. It's at the service garage at one three six hundred McCracken. During the week, it's seven thirty to three, uh, seven thirty A M. Till three P M. For two weeks, we'll be running that, and then on the twenty-second, that's our shred day, and that'll be from nine till noon. And the limit is four bags or boxes per resident, no businesses. We also did get, managed to get three extra city cans put out, we put an extra, the garbage cans that we spoke of in the prior meeting. We did put an extra one up on Rock Side, on the other side of the R T A bus stop, which seems to be a problem. We added another one over at, hold on one second. At Woodward Boulevard on the east side of Turney Road. And then we also ordered, uh, replaced, or reinstalled one over across from St. Peter and Paul. So we have three new ones, we have approximately four other ones we will be putting out, just looking for the problem areas, and then we'll be putting those out as well. And with that, you have my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Psychon. Are any of the council people have a question for Mark Psychon, Service Director? Mr. Donahue, you have the floor. Can't hear you, Chuck got on mute.
Okay. It went on what he, what he was talking about, I was just concerned or asking, wondering about the, if we're gonna start grass cutting.
Yeah, grass cutting has started. Grass cutting has started, yes, um, we had, we sorry, we had, obviously, this is the worst time of the year because grass grows so fast, we do have a cruise out. The, we had some rainy days, obviously, we can't cut during, you know, that time. Also struggled a little bit with, we had a, an illness, I believe, with core community. So that pushed us back a little bit, but we are back on track and we should be getting to a lot of these properties here soon. We're also waiting for some more part-timers to show after high school, so once we get some of those employees in, we'll be moving even faster, but understand this is a, the worst time of the year. It's when it rains all the time and the grass grows all the time, the people, you know, are calling and complaining, and rightly so. But we, you know, we can only do so many in one day when the weather's nice, so rest assured that we will be getting to them, it will, it will be a minute, but we will be getting to them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have a question for Mr. Psychon from council? Okay, there being none, any other directors wish to make a comment? There being none, we'll move on. Next comments by citizens on tonight's agenda, that would be the two items that we have, forty-three and forty-four. Barb, would you read the rules, please?
Comments shall be strictly limited to brief statements, not to exceed five minutes, with comments limited to legislation on the current evening's agenda. No citizen shall speak more than once.
Any citizen wishing to speak on tonight's agenda? I believe my
I'm not seeing any hands.
I was just gonna say, I was gonna scan it too. Thank you, Jason, thank you very much. Okay, there'd be no comments. Go ahead, please.
No, somebody had a hand up and then they put it down.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Okay, I'll give them that five-second delay there. Okay, then we'll just move on to committee reports, are there any committee reports?
None, Mr. Chairman has said earlier.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for taking care of that, Councilman Vaughn. Okay, next we'll move on to ordinances. Seeing as there are no resolutions, we'll keep moving on. First ordinance coming up for business tonight is ordinance forty-three, twenty twenty-one. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance number forty-three, twenty twenty-one, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by council persons Nanadovich, Donahue, Vaughn, and Taglerini. An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor or his designated to purchase one Caterpillar hydraulic excavator through Ohio Cap, an approved vendor under Sourcewell Contract Number zero three two one one nine dash C A T, Agreement Number three eight nine three six, per the attached pricing quotation.
Give me a second here, hold on. Okay, thank you. First off, I'd like to make a motion to consider by title. Barb, would you take a roll, starting with myself?
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini. Taglerini.
You're muted, Frank. Sorry, yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Okay, suspension of the three reading rule. I make that motion, starting with myself, Barb, take a roll.
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Waiver of Rule twenty-four, starting with myself.
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
And on the adoption, I make the motion, starting with myself, Barb, roll, please.
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
That concludes forty-three, twenty twenty-one, it passes with six yes votes. Next, we will move on to ordinance forty-four, twenty twenty-one, Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance forty-four, twenty twenty-one, sponsored by Mayor Matthew A. Burke, co-sponsored by council persons Nanadovich, Blake, Donahue, Vaughn, and Taglerini. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civic Plus for the design, creation, and continuing technical support for our new Garfield Heights city website.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to consider by title, starting with myself, Barbara, take a roll, please.
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
And moving on, suspension of the three reading rule, Barbara, would you take a roll, starting with myself?
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Moving on, waiver of Rule twenty-four, starting with myself, Barbara, roll call, please.
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
And on its adoption, starting with myself.
Nanadovich.
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Taglerini.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes. That passes six yes votes. That concludes our ordinances for tonight. Next, we have comments by citizens. Barb, would you read the rules, please?
Comments shall be restricted to any problem a citizen has, which has previously been submitted to his or her councilperson or to the City Hall Department directly involved. If submission of a problem to a City Hall Department or a councilperson is made and there is a lack of service rendered in this regard, the problem may then be presented during comments from citizens at a future meeting. It is the intention of this rule that no request of a first nature is presented on the floor at this time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No citizen shall be heard more than once.
Thank you, Barbara, and again, I will reiterate, no request of a first time. So if you've spoken to your councilperson or a director at council as a first time, are there any citizens wishing to speak tonight?
Renee Bolton.
Ms. Bolton, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I have a question, but it's based on something that Mr. Donahue just brought up this evening. Just a question about grass cutting. Can I ask that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Talked to anybody, did she talk to anybody?
It was specifically about what Mr. Donahue just brought up.
Did you talk to anybody previously?
He just brought it up. How can I previously talk about it, and he literally just said it this evening?
Ms. Ms. Mullen, please.
Yes, may we have Ms. Bolton's address?
About five seven four nine Turney Road.
Thank you.
That, that was why I asked if I could ask a question based on something that Mr. Donahue, that was specifically what I said.
Okay, I was under the impression that, I was under the impression that you had spoke to him before.
No, I said, can I ask a question based on something he just brought up about grass cutting?
Okay, I, I was under the impression that you had talked to him prior to that, no, that would be a first-time nature, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Bolton. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, for the clarification, I appreciate that.
Giselle Gainer.
Giselle, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, what committees?
Name and address, please.
Giselle Gainer, forty-nine fifty-seven East Eighty-first Street. What committees have vacancies on them right now?
Okay, offhand, I don't have that in front of me. I did send a copy to Ms. Bolton on that. Again, I do not have that in front of me. If you would give me a call, I will answer that for you tomorrow, and I can get, print another list, because there was a list that came out, and I only got half of it. Apparently, Ms. Bolton got the full email. I do not have the answer to that right at my fingertips right now. But I will look into it, and if you would, I'm not gonna ask for your phone number, I'll give you mine. Mine is area code two one six.
Oh, I have, I have your phone number. And I actually, I actually have a second question. If what is, I'm, I'm, I'm pulling my words together, what is the?
Was this brought up before? Did you speak to somebody about this?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what is the escalation process if my specific councilperson is not very responsive or easy to get a hold of?
Okay, what I would do is call that councilperson again, and if you would, call me and we'll have a, I'll alert him that you're trying to get a hold of him, he may not be getting your message.
Sir, you are my councilperson.
I do answer my phone calls when I get them.
Oh, well, I have proof, but I just want to know, future state, what is the escalation process?
Tell me the day and I'll look it up, because I haven't erased this for two years.
Okay, but, okay, so my question is to actually Director Riley, because I don't really have any interest in going back and forth. Mr. Riley, what is the escalation process if you do have someone that is unresponsive?
There's actually no set escalation process in place, so my suggestion would be is that is why we have the rule that we were just discussing, that if there's been a problem that you've called the council about and it hasn't been addressed, then you're allowed to bring it up at a council meeting. So this would be the time to say, whichever councilperson you called, I called you, I asked you about the grass cutting on my street or whatever it may be, and you never responded. That, that is why this process is in place, if you're not getting a response.
You still have the floor, Ms. Gainer. Tell me what you called me about, Lynn, please, I don't remember the call, because I don't have it in my phone. But let's, let's, you say you called me and you can prove it, let's talk.
Okay, so from a pettiness perspective, I don't go there, but I can, I can call you again, and we can discuss, but I was actually trying to open a small business in the city. And this actually came up during a meeting in February. I contacted you at that time, before that meeting, and didn't get a response. I've been working with the city since then, and I'm still kind of in limbo on what that response is. But I'll call you again, I'll give you, it's been a few, it's been a couple of months, I've called a few times. And last meeting, I actually messaged you directly on the chat feature here and four times, and I did screenshot that, but I didn't get a response at that time either. So I'll give you a call again, in all fairness, but I do, as a citizen, expect some kind of response. Again, I'm not a petty person, I don't get into the tit-for-tat and the, you know, tell me what date you called me and all of that, I think that from a professionalism standpoint, it's a better way that it can be handled, and I'd like to go that route. Thank you.
There's no problem with that, thank you very much. And anybody else have any comments tonight, citizens? Mr. Blake, I allude to you.
I see no other hands.
Well, then, if there be no other hands, we'll start comments by council. Miscellaneous business, and what we'll do is we'll start off with Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Gator, concerning a small business, if you'd like, I would really talk to Noreen Kuban. She's economic developer, she can answer those questions.
Sure, I've talked to Noreen and emailed back and forth with her for quite a bit, but I still don't have a concrete answer. And it's been, it's been, it's been a few months now. And it's been, it's been, it's been a few months now.
Okay, well, okay, that was just my suggestion. Is Noreen on tonight? Does anybody know?
I did, though. I'm sorry, Mr. Vaughn. I do appreciate that, though. Thank you.
I'll take care of it, Tom.
Okay.
Tom, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask Ms. Gainer the same thing, but I didn't want to butt in, but I will get with Noreen tomorrow and find out if she's gotten anywhere, and I'll have her call you, Mrs. Gainer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This past week, thank you. This past weekend, a lot of phone calls about grass cutting. The crews, we have been told, are out, you know. They can only do so much every day. The fact that we've had rain, the way we had all last week, had really hampered them from getting out. This week is supposed to be a drier week. Hopefully, we can get caught up on a lot of this, but the residents have issues about a neighbor whose lawn is out of control. Please feel free to call your councilman. I drive past these homes. When you call me about them, I check them out. I have a hard time differentiating between the grass and the weeds, to be honest with you. I'm not sure if the dandelions come into play here on the rule. But it, it's a mess out there, and it makes the city look uncut. So if people could, please get out and get your lawns cut. This past week, we had our Day of Prayer over at St. Trees Church, and it was a fantastic day, two hours of prayer. The community came together. It was great to see people again, to be gathered in a house of prayer. There was about a hundred people there. It was very well done. Scripture was good. Prayer was good. I'd like to thank the committee for putting it together, and I look forward to us having one again next year. Our parade committee, I'm hoping that we get some information from them in the next few hour, days, excuse me. Excuse me, so that we were all up to date on what we're doing, where we're, we're stepping off from, so that the neighborhoods can be told and people can be out there. And hopefully, we'll have a good turnout for that. And with that, that's all I have tonight. Everybody have a good week, and to all mothers, belated happy Mother's Day. Thank you.
Mr. Dudley, you've got the floor, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, all right, I like to say that Councilman Vaughn was absolutely right about the Day of Prayer. I did make it. I wasn't able to stay because I had to actually go to a funeral service. But I did enjoy the part that I heard, the first part, and even, I got to meet some guy, I thought he couldn't sing, but he turned out he could sing. So I enjoyed the singing as well. But I enjoyed the speech, even I made it time, I saw the mayor speak as well, and I really enjoyed myself. And I agree with him, you know, maybe it shouldn't be once a year, Day of Prayer, maybe they should pray several days a year, you know, and open it up so people can come. But I did enjoy it. Whoever put it together, hey, I really did enjoy the program, that I did. Also, I wanted to mention, too, we also had a nice program. We had the Stop the Violence, and it was streamed live, and it's going to be placed on YouTube. You can find that information through Weldon's PC on his post, and it's going to be posted on YouTube, and I should be on Facebook here in a minute, so you can watch it. But it was a great program. And I tell you, I believe the speakers were right on target, and.
You're muted, Mike. Michael, you're muted.
Okay, we, so we had a great program, which was held with the Stop the Violence program. It was great. Started off a little chilly, but it warmed up as the speakers warmed up, and I appreciate everybody that came out. It was livestreamed, but it's going to be placed on YouTube, so everybody can get a chance to see it, you know, and also it's going to be placed on Facebook. And you may get that information through Weldon PC, and I appreciate them, once again, for coming out and livestreaming the program for those who couldn't make it out due to the weather elements at the time. But I also like to state, Ms. Benson, who helped me put that program together, and everybody else that participated. And what we done, we actually named the names of all the individuals who lost their lives, who was killed in Garfield Heights through an act of violence, and as their names was called off, a candle was lit for them. And it was a prayer between various clergies. We thank Father David and the Holy Spirit for giving us a venue to hold the program at. We thank Minister McHenry for being one of the clergies who done a prayer for a group, and also, we get it right, also Father David, who done it as well. And we had, from Christian Kingdom Assembly, we had Elder Johnny, and he read some of the names. At the end of the program, we done about a hundred balloon release into the air, and it was beautiful, you know. It was absolutely beautiful, so you will get a chance to see that. But I encourage people, when we had these programs going out to city, I know we all can't make them, but try to make some of them. It's a good thing, it's a positive thing, it brings that unity in the community together, and gives us a chance to kind of communicate at the same time. Also, I want everybody to realize that we know we coming up on Memorial Day, and I tell you, that's a dangerous weekend for drinking. Last year, I lost my little brother around Memorial Day weekend. He was getting on his motorcycle, riding home about ten o'clock last, at night. We're from Baltimore, Maryland, that's where I'm from. And ten o'clock at night, Memorial Day weekend, he was not drinking, no alcohol in his blood system. He was struck by a car. They hit him so hard, knocked him thirty, forty feet down the road, and he died. That's why I said, do not drink and drive. The individual who hit him was not sober. Do not drink and drive, people. And if you don't have to be nowhere, hey, just sit at home, enjoy your family, hey, pay your tribute and your respect to the vets, and go and see your family members, and, you know, give praise to them as also for the time they gave you while they was here. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I also like to give my prayers to the officers' families that lost their lives in the line of duty, also in City of Garfield Heights, because you know that, you know, like I say, when you have a problem, the first person you call is them. The first person to go run into the building is them in the fire department, your first responders and your paramedics. So we got to keep them in prayers, as well as our community here. And I must see, make sure I got nothing else going on here. No, I believe that takes care of it, and I like to tell everybody have a happy, safe Memorial Day weekend, and definitely come out to the parade, the city parade. Come on out to, they put it out, come on out there. I believe our councilman, Jason Blake, is heading out of working with a part of the group that is getting that together, so let's show our support for our city. I'm definitely going to be, and I know our council colleagues will be there, and the mayor as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Next, move on to Mr. Donahue.
Okay, I'm not going to talk about it much. Sorry I brought anything up about the grass. Ms. Bolton, if Frank Taglerini can't give you the answer, I'm sure he'll pass you on to the person that can. Other than that, uh, I'm not going to say much. That, that, that's all. Go ahead, have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. I'm going to jump over, I'm going to go to Mr. Taglerini. Frank?
Thank you very much. Thank you. First of all, I like to bring up about the grass cutting. It's not only the city's responsibility. We have so many big homes that people haven't caught up on it, and I understand it's raining and circumstances, but please, just try to get out there and get your yard cut up, so that we can get some of this knocked down. The city's going to look so much better. Next, about the parade, I am on the parade committee. Portion of it that's mine is the vintage vehicles. I've got quite a few lined up. It should be a very nice parade. The only holdback that we might have is weather, because a lot of these guys won't pick their cars out in rainy weather. Let's all say a special prayer. We get good weather for Memorial Day morning. It is leaving from Maple Park School, ten o'clock is what we got it scheduled from. It's going to be going down Turney Road over to Marymount. Is it Marymount, or either Marymount or Jennings? We're going to be going to both of them, and then ending up at the Civic Center. Sure, Jason can fill us in a little more about that, and it's his turn to speak. I also like to put out my condolences to the police officers' families that gave up their lives for our community. And if you see a police officer, like somebody mentioned earlier this week, but not only this week, anytime, thank them for their service. They do a great job, and I support them a hundred percent. With that, I'm done. And everybody have a great evening.
Mike, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, well, since the Memorial Day parade has been mentioned, it'll start at ten o'clock at Maple Leaf School. We'll start staging at nine fifteen. We're going to head north on Turney Road to Granger. We're going to take a right on Granger and go down to Marymount Place. We're going to drive through Marymount Place, so those seniors can enjoy the parade. We will exit that facility and head west on Granger. We will go to Jennings Hall and do the same thing. It will be pretty much a motorcade. There won't be anyone walking. There will be no band this year. It's going to be something similar to what Medical Mutual did last year. We currently have, in the neighborhood, of sixty to seventy vehicles that are participating in the parade. The American Legion will hold a ceremony after the parade at the Plaza. However, it'll be closed off just to the participants in that ceremony, and we will livestream the parade as well, and we will get that link out. I don't have it with me, I apologize. If anybody would like to participate, you can contact myself, and I will get you the information. And I would like to clarify one thing. I am part of the committee, as is a lot of people, but the driving force behind this parade is a resident, Jennifer Narones. And I can't say enough about the passion that she has to get this parade going. And, again, she's incredible, and she's really, this is one, this is her project, and she loves it, and I support her a hundred percent with it. Moving forward, there will be a recreation committee meeting this Wednesday at six thirty PM. The information is posted on the city website. There will be a community awareness meeting Wednesday, May nineteenth, that Councilman Taglerini and I will be holding. It will be the information, I can send you the information if you reach out to me, and it'll also be in the Neighborhood News this week. I'd like to thank everyone who participated and put together the Day of Prayer, and I'd also like to thank Councilman Dudley for his Stop the Violence program this past weekend. I think both programs were, were very well attended and good for our community. And lastly, please pray and support our officers that serve the community, and, you know, that's all I have right now, but that's it.
Okay, and then I'll close it off. I would like to welcome Inoplasty to our Garfield Heights family of businesses. And as the mayor had stated, they make like, for twenty-two, or twenty thousand of these barriers. I think if we could get them to start producing orange barrels, we'd be fat. So, because those are all over. Mark, getting a lot of comments about the service department, the way they're patching, and the sweepers being out on a regular basis. A lot of good comments, nothing negative. You're doing a great job, I feel, and I know we just got a new sweeper here shortly, a while ago, and this new equipment coming up, we'll be able to do a little bit more work and a little bit more efficiently. And keep up the good work, Mark. Fallen officers, if anybody thinks that they're brutal or whatever, remember, when you call them into a situation, you're expecting them to defend your life. It's their life they're putting on the line to defend yours. Yes, we do have some that are not adhering to the policies. But it's just like anything else, we hear about all the bad kids in the city, and all the bad kids across the world, and it's one or two percent of the total kids that are causing all the chaos. Our officers are in the same position. One or two percent of all the officers we have across the country, one or two percent, maybe. But those are the ones we hear about. Nobody talks about the accolades to the kid, the police officer that bought the homeless man, or the crippled man who motorized wheelchair, or took food to families that didn't have it out of their pocket. Nobody talks about those. We talk about the bad officers, as we should. They should be weeded out, but it's this very, very small percentage. It's not all our boys in blue. When they come there, they have your best interest at heart when they're walking through that door. Especially if you're not home and somebody's in your house, you want them to go first, believe me. They're the ones you're going to have put in the top line. So keep them in your prayers, and remember the fallen officers in Garfield Heights. They did what nobody else was willing to do. As far as the chats, I do not listen or look at the chats on the bottom of the screen. I'm running a meeting. I'm making notes. I'm listening to what the people are saying. I don't, and I'm going to be honest, I don't have time to listen to that, because I'm not getting the full message. I get a portion of it, just as you do. And I'm not going to sit here and click and miss something and say, hey, we missed that. You want to look at the chats? Fine. I'm listening to the meeting. I'm making my notes. I'm the president of council. It's my job to keep the meeting running. If you want to talk, fine. I have no problem with that, but I will not read the chats. And I'm not being rude, not being disrespectful. If you chatted me, I'm telling you right now, I don't pay attention to the chats at the bottom of the screen.
No, I know I'm out of line, but that is rude and disrespectful, and I messaged you after trying to contact you. Again, from a professionalism standpoint, I have a reputation uphold, so, but I will not allow you to drag me like that. But like I said, I will for sure handle it, because I'm tenacious about my business and my opportunity, so I will get it handled. But, but I will not allow you to downgrade me like that, when it's something that I'm doing the right thing by contacting you.
And again, I stick by my comment, and it was not meant to be disrespectful, Ms. Gainer. It was not meant to be. A lot of people are very, very thin-skinned, and everything's right now looking for how you disrespect. I'm not even going to go there. I'll drop it at that. And please, do call me. I look forward to speaking with you, and it will be a very civil conversation. I have no problem. And as far as your resident, my word, I have eleven hundred residents. I don't know them all. I've seen you maybe four or five times. I understand that, but I have eleven hundred residents. If I don't get five or six calls from different ones that I go out on every day, I, I talk to a lot of people. A lot of people, I see their face. I don't know their names, but I have eleven hundred people. And with that, I have nothing else to say, except thank everybody. Have a great Memorial Day weekend. And if one of my council colleagues would be so kind as to, motion?
Chairman.
Mr. Vaughn?
Our next council meeting will be May the twenty-fourth, correct?
I believe so, yes. I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Right, May the twenty-fourth. So with that being said, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second, I second that motion, please.
Seconded by Mr. Taglerini. Barb, would you take a roll call, starting with Mr. Vaughn?
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
That's six yes votes. As of seven forty-nine PM on the fifth, or tenth of May, twenty-twenty-one, I end the regular council meeting for Garfield Heights. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening, and thank you for your participation. I really mean that.
All right, good night, Ben. Take care, fellas.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.